This conference will now be recorded.
2023 at 5:30. Um, this workshop is on wells in the city of Port Orford and I will pretty much be handing this right over to council president Beliceus because she obviously did most of the footwork on this. So it's all you. I'll just bang the gavel if people get out of control in the audience.
Okay, this is great. You can be help me be the timekeeper, Pat. We can tag team it.
And that's well, and this is when like being the timekeeper is tough because it's a workshop and this is when we should have like the time to speak up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, okay. So thanks so much. And what I am, I wanted to thank you guys all for coming today, especially because I know everybody's probably still has a hangover from our recent meeting. And thank you all also for coming at this slightly irregular time. It was a little bit of a juggle to get us get a time when we could all get here. And I want to thank Crystal Shoji for coming today, too. So first of all, I just wanted to ask, has everybody had a chance to read the memo? And if you haven't, that's okay, because we'll, we'll try to just go over some. So Gary, Greg has, okay. Um, I did send out a newer version that was not in the packet. It's very similar to what I had sent out on the first to John. And it just has a few things actually that Tim Pogswood had insights or details that he had given me that I added just a few. So it's mostly the same. The way I propose that we run this meeting today is if you read the memo, you'll see there's three basic policy issues to deal with. And so I was thinking we could just have a brief introduction, then we can talk about each one of those things. And we'll try to keep each discussion point to like 15 to 20 minutes. I think the first one in some ways is the technical one that's really most urgent to get to. And hopefully, we can finish up this meeting in a little over an hour and at the end, maybe come to some sort of consensus about what we want John to do. But this is a workshop, so there's no decisions. It's just an opportunity for us to have time other than really late at night to talk. Okay? So with no further ado, just to remind you, the issue of wells in our city came up last May because with water curtailment, people are wanting to develop and the city started a polit- started to grant wells during the time of curtailment. At that time, I started hearing from citizens who were concerned about what's going to happen with we have too many wells, or somebody that had previously gotten permitted with water, city water, but now they're having wells. Questions were coming up. I ran into Crystal at a conference. She said she thought there were some questions that had to do with plating that we had to refine. And lo and behold, in May, Crystal and Gary Milliman recommended some language that we could use to clarify things. At the time, it was late at night. We didn't deal with it. And so we've been, it just seemed like it's time to bring it back so that we can discuss it. The three big policy issues, let's just do in turn. The first one is how do we properly identify the water sources on land plats? And, and that is like when somebody comes in to ask for to develop the land, they have to show that they have a water supply. And all of that is going to be documented on the deed and, and various things like, like that. Um, so that is the, there's been some confu- there was, has been some confusion about how that was happening, especially with our prior administrator. And I was hoping that we could ask Crystal at this point and maybe and or to share with Joseph, if you guys could explain to us what the process is now. Yeah, please come up. And what needs to happen to rectify it? Sure, if you'd like to, Greg, our Greg Thielen, our planning commission chair, Crystal Shoji, our planner, and Joseph Harrison, our planning tech assistant.
Can I correct one statement before we move forward?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the wells weren't allowed because of curtailment. Wells have always been allowed in the city of Port Orford. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
Curtailment was a way to allow people to continue.
Development. Yes. Thank you for clarifying that, Tim. That's right.
So the question, the question has to do with why we brought this up. And yeah, so there's several places in the code, just to start with, and these guys might have some things to add, where it suggests that we should be dealing with public sewer and water. And one of them I just pulled up here is at the bottom of the zones, when it talks about lot sizes, and then it talks, it says, when those lot sizes apply, when public water and sewage are available. And so we've always taken it that that's what the city wants us to have. And that if we wouldn't be able to do those lot sizes if we didn't have it. I guess there's been some debate about that. But that's the way most cities that I would know would expect that anyway. So that's why I guess that's why I thought it would be that. Then conditional uses often are businesses or something like that. And they need to show how they're serving their customers. For instance, if it were a restaurant or an RV park or something where people would be using water, which a lot of businesses do, then we would have to, we have to go to, well, there's different expectations. And so if they're on a well, they have to prove different things at the state level. And then we would have to address that in the conditional use permit of what they need to do and what they need to address and how many approvals they need at the state level and things like that. And there are a couple which we've found. And then the other one that you already mentioned is plats like land partitionings and subdivisions, which are the basis of being able to develop land unless you've already got your lot. And those require all kinds of information about how things are organized and what, what you're using. And so we're expected to put something on the plat about the water lines, the sewer lines, and then that would be what, you know, if, if they're not using the water lines or they can't have the water lines or something, then it would be wells. And then that follows through with the title company and things like that. So that the property is understood when somebody buys it. I mean, also like easements and all kinds of stuff like that go on those plats. And then the assessor's maps show the configuration, but they don't show wells and all kinds of stuff like that. Those, that's actually part of the filed plat. That's all I have to say. These guys might have some more.
Thank you, Crystal. Can one of you guys also just explain what is the process when somebody comes in and what they have to do to show their water source?
There's several places. So why don't you just explain about planning?
So on the planning clearance documents and as part of planning clearance, if they weren't hooking up to city water, they would need to show either a water rights document or a well log, or due to the emergency situation we're in with the curtailment, we have been accepting a well contract as another valid source of documentation showing that they are putting in a well and that they have the rights to the water there. And as part of the process, we need to get, they would need to get a sign off from our head of public works that the city's okay with them submitting the application to county to get a well put in. And as part of that, they are also supposed to contact and file with the Curry County Water Authority to show that the water is, or that the well is allowed to be put in.
I have a question. So does that, I'm gonna ask this because I think you guys would want to know too, and I'm not sure. So does that entail the inspection of the well? Or are they just wanting to know what's on it? And then inspection is a different thing?
The inspection of the well itself would be the Curry County Health Authority. That's if the well was servicing like commercial ventures or was servicing multiple residences, that would to ensure the water quality of the well is sufficient for those uses.
I have a question. When you talk about the Curry County Water Authority, are we talking about the, the water master for our region? Or is there some authority at the county besides the health part of it?
I believe it would be the Curry County Water Master.
Okay, thanks.
I have some history on that.
Okay.
So I was just visited by Kent Downs Public Health Division Drinking Water Services. And the county or the region does not have a health inspector.
Oh.
So he also did my health inspection this last Saturday, which was two days ago. And he also took a look at my well since he was down and noted some things about it. So that's who is doing it right now. And he is with the state of Oregon. So, and if you want to know.
Is he with DEQ or OHA?
No, he's with the Drinking Water Services.
I'm so glad he was here because I was gonna say we don't have a county water master or health inspector.
Yeah.
And it's the water master is like more like water amount, whereas OHA or DEQ is more the health part. So quality, yeah.
Well, he is, he was the health inspector and he is the gentleman I went through at the state of Oregon. That's who I started with when I started my well process.
Yeah.
And I also have emails from the Zach Golick, and he is a physical engineer for Drinking Water Services. And he is the person who dictates what you have to go through as far as pumping facilities, distribution systems, crossing sanitary sewer, sewer and water lines, disinfection, capacity, and those kinds of things. And there's 26 pages of guidelines that you have to follow. And they're the ones that, so the state of Oregon is, despite what some people might think, are on top of it when it comes to water wells.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. And I would do want to clarify too, though, that the well that you're putting in is like a community water system as opposed to like what would be an individual house. It's not a domestic system. So there's.
It's different, but there are guidelines on domestic wells. And they're the same. I mean, a lot of them are the same.
Yeah.
I have a follow up question. Community water system, individual well, do we know what the subdivision type well falls under? Okay, thank you, John. Three or more? Thank you.
Four or more.
Four or more is community and three and less. Okay, good. Thanks.
Yeah, it's all about the, the population that you serve, which really makes a fine angle with vacation rentals when you think about the transient nature of it. And if they're on wells, how fun that could be to try to regulate.
So they go as far as breaking all that down. He asked me how many transients I have, how many long, I mean, it's a, it's a.
But he would take care of domestic wells, too.
Of course.
So if we just learned of that person, who are we having vet our stuff?
I believe it's this gentleman that Tim is asking. But, but part of the question, I think that Crystal is getting to is, is to get clarity on this so that if, so that the, if we have a planning clearance form or we're, we're just making sure that the city has, that people are crossing the Ts and dotting the Is from the city perspective. Because there's been a period when things may have been like not totally being, the city was not totally on top of these things. So we're, I think the product, we're talking about making sure we have a good process so that we know when wells are coming in, that we're, that they're coming in correctly, that we're marking them, the, the plats properly and such.
That's the biggest problem is the plat size, because you have to stay 50 feet away from sewer, 100 feet away from like a septic lateral, those kinds.
And stormwater lines.
Yeah. And you have to cross water, water lines have to cross sewer lines at certain distance in depth. So all of that's put forth by the state of Oregon.
And we also want to know that we're doing the right thing. Like, like if we're not following our code, we want to do what the council wants us to do. Because we shouldn't be making our rules for the city. We want you guys to make the rules for the city.
Well, the county also has buy in on this because they won't allow a well within a certain yardage, a certain footage of another well. They won't put two together. We ran into it up on Seventh Street in Jefferson. The county's first look, that's first line of defense. I said, no, this one, this guy already has one. It's too close to this lot. You can't have one.
And would you know if there's a specific?
I don't know what the distance is.
Who, who at the, who at the county? I thought we just heard that they're.
County. County decides on the well.
Okay.
Whether the person can have the well by looking at a map.
Distance. Okay.
Yeah.
Is it, is it's a county, but we don't have a county health person and we don't have a county water master?
It's the county inspection, building codes.
Building. Thank you. Good. All right. So it's, it's like the Garrett shop. Okay, good. Garrett being Garrett Thompson, the county.
I think you have to be 100 feet away from a property line as well.
No, that, not by state law, you only have to be.
Five feet, whatever.
Five or less. Yeah.
Hundred feet from the property line. Lots aren't even 100 feet.
Within the setback, I believe is what it says.
It can be, it can, I've seen some in my neighborhood that are like pretty much right on the property line. So I think it's the 50 feet from the, from the sewer that's the big thing.
I just had to, but anyway, it didn't matter.
Because of those different parameters. And it might have been because of the public nature of it. You have to have a hundred foot control area. I mean, I know you're new for public areas, so maybe that's the difference. Because there's a brand new well about 15 feet away from a property line in my neighborhood. So there must be. But the thing that scares me is like our future development, our sewer lines, our water lines, like, like how do you get ahead of, oh, we let somebody put this well in, but we could bypass this pump station later on if we put a line through our easement here or something. I mean, I know it's far fetched, but, but we have to be careful of our, our easements and our right of ways, too.
Right. They're not allowed. They have to be on the.
No, I know, but that 50 feet though, like, and.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
But you know what I mean? Like, oh, we're gonna bypass Wyoming Pump Station, but we have to go within 50 feet of this well. So how do we skin that cat?
And the, the other thing is.
You would, you would hope so.
The thing about these plats, if I wasn't aware of the thing about the distance, because I've been really trying to track it down. I hadn't figured that out at the county, John, yet, that if one person gets it, like one neighbor gets it, then the next person wants to, they can't, you know? So it's like a first come, first served. And it's almost like the scramble to the end. But anyway, um, Crystal, can I ask also, so did the language that you proposed back in May and that proposed resolution, would that solve the problem that you have about plating? It basically says to make note of alternative water sources a temporary measure. You, you have some specific language there. And I know one of the other reasons this came up is because there was a subdivision that was approved like 15, 18 years ago with water, city water, but that now is coming back and wanting to do parts of it on a well, is my understanding? Is that not true, John? That's the talus?
You know what? I lost track of that.
That's what we've heard.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. Salus.
Talus subdivision, Snobby Acres. He was proposing a well for the two homes he was building.
Yeah.
But I don't think that'll fly with the county anyway, because the two properties on Jefferson, when the county said no, have budded each other. And that's why they said no.
Okay. Well, interesting. So this is like, you know, this is part of the thing of like, so if something happens 15 years ago, or it's going to happen 15 years in the future, we're just trying to think about, let's get things straight so that we're not creating problems for the future and that we have clarity. So Crystal, getting back.
People have to know when they, when they have a plat, I mean, when they buy a property, whether it has a well or whether it's city water. I mean, they should, that they're using because they assume it's city water if they're in a city or that, that it's available.
Yeah.
So I think this came from planning chair Greg Thielen, but we work together. So we just wanted to make sure that we were putting something on the plats that made sense. And so the three of us have been saying that if the, if city water is available, let's see, I haven't looked at this for a while, the owner should be required to have city hookups to utilize city water service. And the use of a well would be an alternate means of water supply for new development during the time that city water is not available, the wells for city water. I understand that they've always allowed them for irrigation and things like that. And that the use of wells would be in conformance with the policies that the city council had made at that time. And so we are projecting this on the plats into the future so that if you guys made a policy today, then plats are out there that are being developed and they have a year to get those done. So there's about three or four out there. And that if, if this is on there, it just says that they will comply with whatever you guys say at the time that they file their final plat.
So that's what's happening now?
Right.
Without any ordinance, you guys have resolved it in that way? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, resolved it sort of.
But it depends on what you all decide you want. If, if nothing happens, nothing will be on the plats.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Excuse me, nothing, the issue won't be resolved other than it is in the, in the current situation, which is.
Just do what the council says.
Yeah. I mean, the, the problem is, is that the, in order to have a minor partition, to create, to create a lot, you have to have water service.
Right.
We know that. There is no water service available. So wells are allowed, I mean, wells have always been allowed, but wells are filling that gap.
Which is not what, what the code says. It's actually, yeah, it's not what the code says.
Which is not what the code says. And the, yeah. So, so we're in a, the, the planning commission's in a limbo here.
So what does the code clearly say?
The code clearly says water and sewer shall be provided.
Actually, I think it's even more specific. I'm pretty sure it says city water and.
City, city, yes.
Which is.
Yes.
Yeah, I have it pulled up right here.
Right. And, and it can't be provided at this point.
Well, it doesn't say, it doesn't quite say that. I mean, it says, it says you have to, you hook up, you have to hook up.
Right. That's right. It says you have to connect. That's correct.
I believe it says, if I'm not mistaken, what I read, I believe it says the code calls out that you have to hook up the sewer, but it does not say that about water. And that's why it's always been allowed.
Right.
Wells have always been allowed. And there are, there are wells in existence that have been in existence since it was time for people to hook up to the city. They chose not to hook up to the city. Those are the folks.
But we're supposed to, we're supposed to be, which we probably aren't doing, that we're not supposed to go down to 5,000 square feet in the residential unless they have it.
And I think the thing too, Tim, is that we're, you know, things have happened in the past, but we're, we're thinking about it. We're looking to the future and not, I don't think whatever we're discussing affects what the.
I'm just saying what has been the history.
Yeah.
And that there are folks that chose not to join into city services back in the day.
Yeah.
And those folks may or may not still be on a well, or their well may have been abandoned. We don't, there's no real way to know.
Yeah. We'll get to some of these conversa, some of these topics as we go. Wiz, do you have some, Gary Burns? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was curious if there's a map with all the existing wells on it. Does the county have?
No.
The state has it.
We don't have an actual map. There is a well log. And I have here in my, I'll show you later when we get to that topic. One of our volunteers in the community has started to try to do a map of that for us. But the data in the well log is incomplete or difficult in terms of location. So we have, we have the beginnings of that, but we don't, it's, the data is imperfect.
I think the state tracks it though.
They have a well log, but they don't map it.
Oh, I see.
No, it's like a page of 42 West and 93.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you type in the county, it pops up and it shows them on tax lots.
Right, yes.
Go that far?
Yeah, yeah.
So blue dots on the tax lots.
Yeah.
So those are the tax lots that have wells currently in Port Orford.
Yeah, but the.
And then that's how they tell whether they're too close or that's right distance.
That I don't know.
I think they actually have to go and see. But what I want to do is just for the, if you guys, I'm thinking for all of us, we want to make sure the meeting doesn't go too long. So I'd like to wrap up this part of the topic and move on and maybe come back to it later. Is that okay? Are there any pressing things? Or does any, any of you guys have things you want to say further? Does everybody get that there's this planning problem that we need to resolve? And, okay.
I'd just like to add that, that the, the, the way that the curtailment document is written, pipes cannot be laid. It, it's not only water can't be hooked up, but the pipes can't be laid. From a planning standpoint, if the, if the, if the developer could be required to do the ordinary sewer and water hookup, it would make life a lot easier in the future for deciding what's going to happen. If the lot is sold or, or somebody. But at this point, the specific wording of the, of the ordinance is that the pipes can't be laid by the city to the property.
Right. But a, a service tap is not piping. That is in reference to new water maids or extensions of said.
So.
That's not a, that's not a one inch poly going out to the edge of the property. And besides, whatever they do within their property is their business. They could lay it and stub it out to the right of way.
But you couldn't, but you couldn't bring it from your main to the, to the property.
That's correct. Not if there's no service tap there. But again, it's not piping to me. Am I off base here, Pat? Piping to me, the way that was writ was new wrote.
I would say property line is what dictates it. Like you're on a well, so all your piping is going to be your piping and.
On your property.
Like as soon as you tap in or touch ground to touch our line, then, then, yeah, but yeah, I agree, but it's.
That was the intent.
Yeah, it's still piping.
Extension of water mains and new.
Right. And I see what you're trying to say, that on their side of the street, it's all their piping. But to answer your question, nothing is going between point A and point B presumptively or preemptively. That's all well taught.
So they're, they're digging up the street for the sewer, but they're not digging up the street for the water line.
They don't, they don't do, they don't do the water service.
And it's not like.
Public Works does.
And they're not all.
But you can't do it.
Well, we're, we're not doing new connections. That's correct.
Timeout, though. The, the city never does those connections. The city is there to monitor people digging around their main line, but all that work is on the developer. So we show up, say, oh, here it is. They dig to it. And that's just their personal, personal line.
Except that now we can't do that because of the curtailment.
Well, we can because we don't have a sewer moratorium and they're not all pocketed in the same trench, like the water's over here and the sewer's over here.
It's not about water.
Right.
They, they don't do the water connection. That's what I'm saying. The developer can run, if they want to run a service line out to the edge of their property, they're more than welcome to. Because when we come back to do the tap, we'll set it in the right of way. Right? We'll drop the tap, we'll dig up the pipe, we'll do a tap, we'll drop a box in a meter in the right of way.
Your, your, this code will allow you to do that?
No, not at this time because we're not doing.
We're all saying the same thing here. Yeah, for all intents and purposes, even if they lay their pipe, it'll stop at their property line and we won't do anything on our pipeline until we get the moratorium.
I would like to see that fixed.
They can still do their sewer tap and connection. We're still allowing all that 100%.
Greg, why do you think that's so important? Because I mean, part of I think what, what they're saying, why the ordinance is to not allow that is because we don't want somebody to tap our water system. So if you connect the line, how can they deal with the pressure and?
From a develop, from a development standpoint, to dig up the street once rather than twice is all.
Well, they'll have to anyway, because the water's never by the sewer. That's, that's inevitable. You're never going to get a common trench with the five foot separation. They would still have to split at some point. The main could be on this side of the road, the sewer could be on this side of the road. And that's generally the case. So.
Okay. So this has all been super helpful. Thank you guys for explaining this to us. And I think if anybody thinks of any questions along these lines that you have later, maybe you can send them to Joseph or John, or I, I'd say send them to me and I'd be happy to research them and or we can continue our education. Okay. So thank you guys very much. So the next topic on this is a little bit more of a like higher level policy philosophical issue, which is, has more to do with the costs of the system. And so the question is how is, how might our policy on wells affect the long-term economic viability of our system if we have more people that are adding wells but are not joining into our community water system? And, you know, I, John, if you can tell me, how much does a hookup cost now? Or was it before we were hooking people up approximately?
Be on the spot.
Okay, well.
It's about 13 for both.
Okay. So maybe like.
Sure is five. So it's around 10 or 11 for water.
Okay. So we've got that. Then you've got the, you know, base rate that's paid every year for each, each person is like, I think 400 bucks just for the base rate. So, you know, it's not like it's going to make or break, but in our budget for water infrastructure and water maintenance, having money to pay in, I think is important. And, and everyone benefits from the system. So. everyone benefits from the system. So anyway, um, that's kind of how I, I wrote down how I see it in here in terms of that sharing the costs, I think is a, is a benefit as we go forward. And that's the part of the policy that was proposed, that people can have wells and can use wells, but they have to be also kind of hooked up to our system or be part of our system. And we, and that, that, there would be a benefit to doing that. So that's this part of the discussion, which I would just say, why don't we, if people have things they'd like to say along those lines, why don't we take turns and discuss that concept?
So that, so, so what you're saying is the, you, you, I don't think like this, but we're telling people they can't hook up to our system, but we legally have to allow them to build. So we have allowed them to put a well in. So let's just say they paid between 10 and 15,000 to put a well in, but then we're going to tell them, you also have to pay your SDCs. It's just almost like a double charge in my mind. And forgive me, I just can't get past it. But, so you're saying, we'll allow you to put the well in so you can build, but you still have to pay your SDCs. So would you require a person to pay their SDCs before you, you allowed them to put a well in, I guess?
Well.
When they got their permit, I would think.
They, we are billing it for SDC fees. We have to.
Okay.
Because that water goes down the sewer system. So we make a meter in it.
Okay.
We're capturing the cost of all the sewer and we are getting the SDC fees.
So that, just for sewer.
The only thing we're getting is, is the water.
But we're saying that they would need to do the one and two.
Yeah, I.
Are the SDC?
Buy into the.
Are the SDC fees separated out for water and sewer? Because there are two separate.
Yes.
Funds.
Yes.
So we're getting the sewer SDC fees and the water SDC fees, not the water. Right.
That's their water from a private well. You can't.
Yeah, right.
Charge them for that.
Yeah.
We're charging them for what goes down the sewer.
Right.
Right.
So, yeah. So Tim, what I'm saying, which is not necessarily like my idea, it was in this, this ordinance, which I thought, well, this is a good idea, which is what we're saying, what this ordinance would have said is you can build your, you can have your well, you can use it. But then when, if and when we get our act together as a city and can come, supply water again, you will need to come and hook up to our system and be a full participant paying money. And that means, I mean, you could use your water, but we need, so that's, I think, how this is, is.
How could we do that when we already got people out there that had wells long before we allowed them during this phase? That's, wouldn't be fair to the.
Do they want to use the hydrants if they have a house fire?
Well.
How did they buy into that?
I suppose they do, but.
How do they buy into that?
I don't know, but you've got, you've, you've got people out there now that are paying, that are on wells, that have been on wells for years.
So we're making.
They're not paying for it either. They're, they're paying their taxes and everything else to earn the right to have fire protection.
But now we're starting to argue.
No, I'm not arguing. I'm, I'm, this is still a discussion. We haven't raised our voice yet. I, I see what you're saying, Gary, I do. But I mean, I don't know how.
Because we make the water to go into that hydrant.
Correct.
And there, and the restaurants they eat at and the medical, all the things that are on here. So how is it?
The restaurants pay for it.
They get that for free and everybody else is paying in, paying in.
The restaurants pay for it, everyone else pays.
Everybody's paying for it besides the owner that's on his private well, but.
The hydrants.
And, and people would, people will always be motivated to hook up as soon as they're available to. Like as far as selling a property, or like you're only going to sell a property for cash if you're selling it with a well on it. And if it has a well on it, you want to get it financed, you're not going to be able to do that without hooking up to the city. So that helps a little bit. As far as the numbers and the future, we could charge 10 times as much for an S, uh, ten, uh, yeah, 10 times as much for an SDC and have everybody in town paying again. And we know it wouldn't be a drop in the bucket for the funds that we need. We know that we need 25, 30 million dollars to do 40% of the system.
Right.
So, like at the end of the day, this ties back into the moratorium and the problem of regardless of how Port Orford is going to grow, we need to be here as a council and promote growth. And obviously being responsible with our water is paramount. But how do we, how do we make people do things like this? I mean, how, like maybe we promote them or give them a break if they have a well. And, and say, if you hook up to the water system now, we won't charge you as much as an SDC, because we know we're going to be saving tax on the system, because you're going to be using that well to irrigate. Or if, you know, there's ways to, to turn that back around and make it better for people. But I just, I want, we got to be careful to make it seem like we're trying to squash everything because of water. And we have to, it's a moratorium for a reason, but we gotta.
Everybody I've talked to, Pat, so far, I think five of them, they all want to hook up to city services when it gets renewed. So I don't.
Wells are a pain.
I mean, they are. And they take maintenance and they take time and there's pressure switches and bladders and all kinds of stuff to mess with. And I think most of those people will come in, but, well, you're talking about penalizing somebody that spent 15 grand in the water so he could build here, spend his money here, shop here and everything else. And then.
And that's the key word is penalize. We're already thinking it like a penalty rather than promoting someone to hook back up in the city water. You know, I want to move to Port Orford. I want to grow. I'm willing to put a well in. So if we want them to hook up, back up to the city water, how do we promote them to do it? Not say, we're going to penalize you or twist your arm.
Need an incentive, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I see it differently in the sense of, I mean, because I guess I've heard, uh, you know, I heard somebody saying that they are choosing to do a well because they think it's going to be cheaper for them in the long run. And, um, but I could be totally wrong and I'm glad to hear your guys' perspective on that. The, the thing about this was the idea of just being straightforward and upfront and saying, yeah, you can do a well. We're bending over to make this possible right now for you to develop. We're going to encourage that. But, you know, as a city, we have this community water system and so we would like to, in the future, bring you back in. And being clear about that upfront, to me, seems like a good idea. But anyway, Tim.
So I will tell you how I got where I'm at. So I've paid in to Port Orford for 18 years since I moved here. And, but talked about a well for about 18 years with three different city administrators. And yep, you can put a well in, no problem. There's nothing against putting a well in. What convinced me to put a well in finally was we started having more and more breaks in the water. We've had a few, uh, shutdowns. We've had a moratorium.
Curtailment.
Lot of stuff that doesn't reach the public, but you hear in the office when you're in, the tank's down to here, the tank's here, we're really worried. Those are the things that convinced me to go ahead and put a well in.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I did it. And, and yes, as far as, uh, consumption goes, it's getting very expensive for the, uh, commercial properties, the restaurants, uh, the port, the RV parks. And it's going to do nothing but get more and more expensive when you start talking about 40, 50, 60 million dollar projects. I don't think we've had a rate study lately, but I'm here to tell you, everybody's eyes are going to open when we do have a rate study. And there's going to be a lot of people here in Port Orford that can afford to live here now, that won't be able to afford to live here five years from now. And that's the problem. I don't like pushing people out that have invested in Port Orford. And whether it's a resident or a commercial person, I don't like the idea of pushing those folks out just because we've got this water problem that's unachievable for a town of 1,200 people.
Well, another piece of this I wanted to mention is that, you know, Gary had put into his, I don't know if you, if you guys haven't read this. Gary put into his report that, um, this idea of bringing people back in is important. This is a quote from Gary Milliman's staff report. This is important to guarantee the integrity of and the long-term funding of the municipal water system and would be probably required by any bond funding secured by the city for financing water system improvements in the future. So in other words, that if you're going to go out and try to get these grants and loans and things that we might need to show a rate study that we are fairly charging and all that kind of stuff. I talked to Gary afterwards. I tried to track down, do you know that for a fact or is this just based on your experience? He said it was based on his long experience as an administrator. So, and I asked him, who could I ask to try to get it fact, fact check it? I was able to check the, uh, with the SRF people at DQ. That's the same agency that we're doing the loan with for the land, with the land. They said for their water infrastructure, you don't need to show it. But, so anyway, I just want to bring that out.
I was, I was going to say that I've, I've looked at that and the USDA loan recently because, because of that. And they have other provisions. They have the provisions that they could come in and raise our rates. You know, if, if we weren't generating enough revenue to pay the loans and things like that, but, but they, they didn't have the requirement that people hook up.
They do on sewer, but not on water.
Correct.
So anyway, so any other thoughts on that? It seems like we have disparate, uh, sentiments on this idea. Some people see it primarily through the lens of private rights and others through kind of community benefits.
I just want to make sure we don't paint the people that have chosen not to join into Port Orford system, whether it was 50 years ago, which it probably was right around 50 years ago. We don't want to paint those folks as bad people or trying to scam us and those kinds of things, because they're not. Because personally, me putting a well in, I don't feel like I'm that kind of a person. I feel like I'm doing what any smart businessman would do. And quite frankly, if a residence wants to put one in, I think that that's a smart move. I, I mean, we have water problems. It's not, uh, it, it, it's not a secretive thing. Everybody knows that we have city water problems.
I hear what you're saying, Tim, and I just kind of feel like, well, what if we all did that? There wouldn't, we couldn't all do it. And so.
Happen someday.
Then, well, but I don't think, you know, I don't think every, I think part of why you have a water system is because the well system would be unreliable. And also, you know, I know you and I were talking about this and you said, well, what if our water system breaks down and people with wells could help other people? Well, maybe we should be thinking about, you know, should the city have a well to help other people or things like that?
I proposed that.
And so.
Nobody thought it was a good idea.
But if we, you know, if we just kind of let it happen willy-nilly, then maybe it won't be possible, you know? So that, these are things that I think are, you know.
I'm okay with guidelines. I'm just not okay with telling somebody that, sorry, you're done. You have to hook it to the city and you can't go, you know.
What about, the other piece I wanted to say is, I don't think this is about people who have wells and are using them in the past. I think this is about like, so, so far apparently this summer, we've had like 12 new wells come to this, into the system and there's more in the pipeline. So let's say the next couple of years, we don't get our act together, even though we're trying. Let's say it's going to take a couple of years to get some major water infrastructure in line. So that could be like 50 wells, 50 households perhaps over the next three or four years. Or maybe let's say 30, that would not be in our system for water. I mean, if it's 12 that just happened this year or that are happening this, so that's kind of how I'm thinking. Okay, I'm looking forward, 12 this year. What if we had 12 every year for the next three or four years? Hopefully it won't go that long. We'll find some, we'll be able to fix our impound or sort things out. But anyway, that's kind of.
Is 12 a good number?
That's what I got from John.
Joseph? I thought it was six.
Well, that's what we have right now is six, but we were 12 wells drilled this summer is what I got.
We've approved about six since I've been here.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the problems we've been running into in regards to the wells are ones that were approved unilaterally by the former administration.
Oh, then I'm not aware of. So they were already drilled?
Yeah, like the ones you already mentioned, upon 7th and Jackson, I believe was, uh, approved unilaterally by the former administration.
Okay, because I was aware of six. I don't remember any 12 though.
Yeah, I'm also aware of six, but I'm a couple more.
That's what I thought.
Been called in about some issues. Then there was another one where you said it was approved, but I haven't caught anything with the county. So now I need to, uh, get ahold of the owners and get copies of their paperwork. So I need to file with the county.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. I thought it was six.
It should be six that have been formally approved and gone through, how, how, but all the I's dotted and T's crossed.
And I've heard that it's six that we're actually, right now, we're recharging for the sewer, but we're not charging for the water. So we have six that are like in the system as that.
Yep.
And from what I understood, there's been more drilled. And I can think of two in my neighborhood that have been drilled. So they're not, they're not in. This gets actually back to another question I meant to ask Crystal earlier, which is what if somebody drills a well ahead of time before they know their use, if it's commercial or domestic or whatever? You know, then I guess later when they come in and ask for their use, then they would just have to show at that point that their well meets the criteria for commercial or.
You'd think the well would have to meet the zone, like preemptively.
It does.
Yeah.
Well, anytime, anytime that, uh, somebody is changing a use, they, they would come in to hopefully see if it was a permitted use. But if it was, it became a conditional use or something, then we would have our hands on it. Because, I mean, hopefully, we would understand what was happening. But if it was a permitted use, um, we would have to train ourselves that, I mean, how, whatever the policies are, are what's expected. That's what we have to train ourselves to do. And we're not sure what, what's expected right now. So we just kind of tried to make up our own rules.
Okay. So I'm going to just see if there's anything else to say in there.
Just one quick question. No one would have a problem with promoting, hooking up to the system if you had a well? Like I, I understand not wanting to penalize or making someone do something, but like, like the, the desire to have someone hook up to the water system or promoting it, like I think that's one of the risks right here is like, because I don't want to tell people what to do either, but there's obvious merit to, to having them do it. So how do we figure that, that out?
We need to sell it as a city. We, we would be salesmen.
Well, otherwise the, it's, the burden is on the rest of us who are paying into the water system. You know, like we're the ones who pay for it. And as Wiz said, you know, we all are paying for fire, the water supply to the fire. The whole infrastructure supports the whole city. But anyway, John.
Thanks. I had a question. I can't remember what segment of the meeting we're in, but.
Number two.
Tim, you were talking about, you know, can we incentivize, you know, people to join in and, you know, I don't know. I'm sure we could if, you know, if the price was right. But at the same time, you also talked about not wanting to force people to do it or push people out. And there may be, and I don't think this is my original idea and I felt like I read it somewhere, but would there be a provision that if, and I'm making an analogy, I lived in a place where they somehow switched and you couldn't have a wood stove anymore. And then when you sold your home, you had to get rid of it or something like that. If, and so I'm wondering, I feel like this council's talked about that concept with wells, like when you sell, you know, if we have our stuff available, the new people have to hook up or something like that. But what's the incentive on us to get our, our system better? You know what I mean? What's ours? You know, I mean.
Well, that's, that's been the downfall really. I mean, and really when we talk about us, it's really wasn't us. It was the citizens voted it down.
Mm-hmm.
So that was, you know, I could go on about that.
Well, that's like 13 years ago. So we, this is all about looking forward, you know, we gotta just, you know. This is about looking forward and figuring out how we, how we take responsibility for our water system. And part of that is being fiscally responsible, which is making sure that when we have people, new people in the community, that we have the growth, that we benefit the city, you know? That's kind of how I see it through, through the contributing to the water system. I, so you guys that, so Tim, this ordinance that was, was drafted by Gary and I guess the planning commission and Crystal, uh, where the ordinance was like, you have like two years after we come in, uh, to hook up to the city. So is it, you just don't, if, if there was a longer period of time, would you feel comfortable? Or you just don't like that period, the idea that at some point we say you need to hook up?
Personally, I put an X beside that, but I kind of like John's idea. When the property's sold, it could be, uh, you, the city could demand that it, you know, a person come, come into it, I guess. Or I don't, I don't know that I like this, but you could have the SDCs paid before you allow the well to be constructed.
The water SDCs.
Right. And I don't know, I'm going to have a hard time wrapping my mind around that, because it's almost like we're double charging them. In my opinion, that's just the way I think.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, that's why I did cross that out. But I did write notes that, you know, the SD fees would be payable before well construction. And then the user may use the well.
You're going to come.
But I guess, yes, that's the problem I have, because 15,000 for a 24-month investment isn't very good. And it is good for us to allow people to build, like you and I spoke earlier, because. because we start getting tax dollars and that's what runs a city. And those tax dollars do help pay for fire services and they help pay that portion of it, in my opinion. That is a way to pay for that, but that's the only real comments I, I have on that.
Okay. Anybody else on this section before we go to the final section? Yeah, John?
Just a question about the SDCs and the idea of, you know, charging them. My understanding of SDCs is that they are, you know, uh, out of a, a method on the increased of capacity or the increased demand on the system. It's to cover the increased demand on the, on the system. And the odd part there is I do think we need to charge them. We need to keep a note because that system, the increased system, even though we're not putting water out of it, the, the pipe and everything else, the extensions, those are going out there. The stuff you collect the SCC for. I don't, the SCC isn't to serve water to a particular house. It's, it's a system development charge based on the increased capacity required by development, I think. So if we don't charge the SDC, so there, and, and it could be a timing thing because in, but, but the strain on the system is when we improve it. And we have to improve it going by a house, whether that house hooks up to the thing or not. So we, I don't think we should be foregoing collection of SDCs if they apply. Where we should, and, and there are, I think there are deferred payment of SDCs. There used to be some things, I don't know if it's Bancroft bonding, but you used to be able to pay your SDCs over time or something through some, you used to be able to finance them, you know, these, it's been a while since I got really down in the nitty gritty of SDCs. But just
And we might need to look at that anyway, because it's my understanding that like some people paid SDC fees in the 1970s for like 200 bucks. And now it costs our city like 10,000, you know, so there might be kind of some update that we need to do, which says you pay your SDC fees. And if you don't do the development within three years, then, you know.
That's an option too.
But that's a different topic.
Lose, those, those folks are gonna have to be grandfathered in, wouldn't you?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Because I think we get into lawsuits, so.
Same things like the wells right now. If something like this ordinance was gonna happen, first we would have to make it wells unavailable, you know? Which
No, it would be
I mean to, to, like for this ordinance, like there, I mean.
I think it's only for new people. I mean, it's, it doesn't apply, it applies to the people who are applying for building is how I see it during this time of curtailment. Yeah.
You wanna, so, so do we want to set something in place from this point forward? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, this ordinance is clarifying during the period of curtailment. We are allowing wells so that people can continue to develop, so to give them that opportunity. And we are asking them to, when we fix our water system or are capable of supplying, that we would ask them to, we would require them to hook back up in 24 months is what this was suggesting after that. So that's only for new people. That's for like the people who are moving in right now and, and adding in. So that's what that was, is about.
And then we're, we're not doing any kind of regulation on something.
Are you have somebody say, are you going? Thank you, John. I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you so much for your contributions. Thank you, John.
Need help? Did anybody call in sick?
I'm wondering if we're talking about somebody that's already hooked up to the water and wants to drill a well. Is what's, are we gonna want to regulate how many wells we have in the city? Is there a
Well, that gets to the next, next topic.
Okay.
So why don't we end, go to the next topic and end on that? And we're getting to, uh, close to, this one I think can be a little bit shorter, which is how is the policy on wells gonna affect our water table and our water system? And I've had like people in town asking me like, oh, how's this, if we're having a lot of wells, is it gonna affect our wetlands? Is it gonna affect our trees? Is it, you know, so that question has come up. I wrote a letter, I, I talked, I had these conversations with the water resources guys that I wrote in here about. To me, it seems like, um, we don't have, in some neighborhoods, we don't necessarily have reliable water, but that the risks are really depend on the density of wells, not the overall numbers. But we do already have in the neighborhood of 70 wells. We don't know if they're all active or not. Some of them are out, are old, some of them, um, are commercial, some of them are, uh, not. And, uh, let's see.
Good to know, know that?
Yes. And so one of the things, um, you, you, so let me just go through this because I know not everybody has read it. Some of the concerns that were listed, um, or that came up were that if you have a lot of wells in the same area, it can, uh, affect our water table in areas. It can cause salinity if there are water, um, wells that are below sea level, close to the ocean, it could bring in saltwater to our water table. Uh, the more wells, the more contamination is possible. And, um, and the point that we discussed earlier, that if there's, if they're close to utilities or actually that if there's a lot of them and there's a, like a depression, that it could in fact, kind of affect the strata that our city's utilities in, like there could be a sinkhole that might affect like one of our lines and stuff like that. That's, those are the kinds of things that could happen if there's too many wells or if there are too many in one area. So there's some, uh, so the most important thing, as I said, is not the overall number, but where they are. And I wanted to bring up, um, we have, uh, Joseph, can you show, get, show this map now? I wasn't sure I'd bring this up, but I'll show you. We have a new citizen in our community, um, Margot, who's here. Margie, you want to wave, raise your hand, who is a retired USGS hydrologist to, um, volunteer to do some mapping of our wells. And she started, and, and that's how I know that the, the mapping, the data on the actual locations is not easy to map. But she, um, picked a few wells to just start seeing what was feasible to help us look at. You know, if we can make, I guess you can't really make that bigger.
I can.
Okay. Just where some are, but she couldn't map them all. So she started mapping some, looking at the depths of them, where they are. We could ask her to explain a little bit more, but in the interest of time, just to start, I'm gonna try to give an overview, which is just to suggest that we may want to pay attention as we are permitting these things of where they are so that we can pay attention to the mapping of them. And, um, from
Is that easier for everyone to see? Do you want me to try to make it bigger?
What did the legend represent? The, the different colored dots?
The colored dots represent that when the wells were registered. And the, the, um, the dark letters are the elevation of the well, so above sea level. And I don't want to totally get into like go down a rabbit hole on these because, um, and sorry, Margot, that I'm like giving the, I'm giving the, uh, whatever Cliff Notes version because this is preliminary. This is her just starting and looking at it for us, which is really cool. But, um, she is volunteering here to possibly help us if we want to go down the path of doing some more analysis and see if, if wells are affecting our wetlands or other wells are affecting each other or things like that. So anyway, but, um, so I think, I guess the, the last part of this in my own take is that it's not a problem yet. If we get a lot of wells in the future, maybe it could be a problem, especially in some specific neighborhoods. It sounds like the county is keeping some of them separate, but anyway. Anybody have any questions about that? We might be able to ask Margot if people have questions about that. And also if there are further questions, I could ask the groundwater people at, um, at the Water Resources Department. Yeah.
It's just super difficult to navigate the GIS or the Oregon well log.
Yeah.
Because you can zoom in and, I mean, you, when you get down to it, you can only see, you gotta move the map around. I mean, so I came up today just doing it again. This is like the fifth time I've been on it. I come up with about 25 that I found. But I know there's more.
Yeah.
I, I feel like your number is probably pretty accurate. But it's, it looks like they're spread out pretty appropriate, appropriately to me, but I don't know what, you know, when we come into these kinds of problems, I'm not a geologist and I don't, I don't know.
It seems like there's some in clusters. And the other thing that occurred to me is there are some neighborhoods actually like on Lake Shore Drive and, and beyond where the, where the wells are below sea level. So, um, you know, those, one of the things that the Water Resources Department guys said to me in particular is when you have wells that are below sea level, if it does, you know, cause salinity in your, in water tables, that's not the kind of thing one person, that's the kind of thing, you know, like we might have to deal with as a community or not. But that, that's the kind of thing that's farther down the pike. And, you know, part of this conversation is looking forward, thinking about what policy is sensible that we can put in place so that we
Protect the community.
Protect the community's interests and water, water table, groundwater and our water system. So anyway. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay. Well, so it's, we're at one hour and, um, at this point, it seems like this has been an educational and good discussion. Is there any, can we maybe go around and see if there's any consensus on? I mean, to conclude, it seems like we need to do something on this plating. We need to the Planning Department, Planning Commission come up with a solution on that. Is there anything else we want to do that we have some just general consensus on where we can, um, direct our staff to help us move forward on this?
Planning is working on this already?
No, I mean, planning, if you recall, planning recommended this ordinance. They passed it and they recommended it to us in May. And we rejected, we did not vote on it back then. We
They would not rejected it, but
We did not vote on it. So that's why I'm bringing it back so we can kind of discuss the concepts about it. Yes, attachment one. This was, it was combined with the, uh, power washing for the buildings, which we did do.
One nice
Will we be able to get somewhere? If we, if we required the SDCs payable, did you suggest that? And did you, you suggest a payment plan as well? Do we do that as a city already?
Again, I'd, I'd have to, I could come back with, with, with more information with a better answer for you. But I believe SDCs can be paid over time. And, and, but again, my understanding of the purpose besides SDCs was, was based on, so for instance, if there's a subdivision in a new part of town, we're gonna have to put a water main through there. And that subdivision was factored into the formula to create the SDCs. And if they can put a well in and go out of that, then our whole formula is kind of messed up a little bit.
But the way you explained the formula earlier made sense.
Yeah.
So if we, if we could somehow get that stipulation in there and, uh, you want this to be a date forward?
I think we're talking about new, what we're talking about, I, I think where this, where this comes in is that people come into the building department and they say, I want to build something. And they have to prove they have water. And we just have to say either, yes, you can build a well and, you know, sayonara. Or yes, you can build a well and, but there's some things, you know.
It's two years out on a well right now. So do we require then, I mean, are we letting them build and then they don't have water for two years? Is that happening?
I don't know. Can you guys comment on that?
I, I'm willing to kind of comment. If I understand what you're saying, Tim, let's say I buy a piece of dirt. I want to build on it and I'm trying to figure out everything I need. I gotta schedule that well two years out. Well, you know, to me, people could still do a lot in those two years and that might be, you know, the finishing touch. So I'm not sure to year, that we shouldn't do anything because it's gonna take somebody two years out. It might be nice for them to know upfront and stuff.
No, no, no. That wasn't my intention.
Okay, nope.
My intention was, so, so we sign off on them building their house and then they can't get their, say they get their house done and out, a year early or a year and a half early, and then they don't have a water source. We're creating a health and safety issue, in my opinion. So it seems like
They would be able to get their farm.
I think they are, they are, we are doing that though, because they said that they're allowing actually even proof of a contract with a well driller. So they're, you know, you were saying you really want to encourage growth and development. They're on that end of the spectrum right now. Yeah.
On the record all the time is control.
Yeah, well, so
I don't want to be broken.
Yeah, well, this, so this is the nuance though. So it's a contract, they're, they're allowing it with a contract to drill. So it could be a delay.
I, I wanted to ask when you, I didn't track how you came to the idea that by doing that, we'd be creating a health and safety issue. What was that thinking of how, how would, how would just having someone build a house without having their well in be a health or safety issue?
In a perfect world, we have a health inspector, we have a, an inspector at the county. We all know we've been there where there wasn't a health inspector or an inspector at the county. Somebody gets their house built, they decide to move in it anyway and buy jugs of water from Ray's to get by. That's where I'm going.
Does that happen? Because you can't, you can't get certificate of occupancy, but
In a perfect world, you can.
Very good. Got it.
That's my only
Okay, well
My only reasoning there. So.
Sure, got it. Okay.
It's nice to preemptively tell people that you're gonna have to hook up to the water and it's not a conversation. And it makes sense and most people want to hook up to the water. But what if they don't pay after the 24 months or don't hook up, you know, like what's the other side of that?
And I just want to say one other thing than John. You know, the other thing is I'm, I mean, you know, in my neighborhood, I'm seeing houses that are going in for a million dollars. So if it's like, if it's a guy that's paying 10, an extra $10,000 and this is a conversation I had with Gary about this, why he thought that was appropriate, it's like chump change. And it, but it make, might make a difference in just sort of our community. It's
Well, it does, because on the other end of that scale, there are folks that are here in this community that are, that are elderly, that may be on a well and they chose not to get into the city. So it could be a complete burden for them to have to pay $10,000 right now.
But they're not gonna have to if they already have it. This is like for new, we're just talking about new.
That's what I asked, was this, was this a forward movement?
Yes.
Yeah. I think as a council, we would get there with those two stipulations.
That new being, like, that's a key word, you know, that, that changed the atmosphere a lot.
I have a question. I might be asking Greg's question. So I'll ask it first and then Greg. So if you remember, the very first part of the meeting was, uh, Crystal, Joseph and Greg talking about what our subdivision or plating code requires. It says public. And so we've done a workaround with the wells and, um, you know, if the council is looking for, I guess, direction from staff, it would be perhaps we could make a, um, some kind of code language that would allow, you know, a well, but we'd have to put it in the code. So we can all say, you know, the code says you shall do this. Because that would be one step short, I think, of a big well program, but, or would, would that not go far enough because it would allow the proliferation, for lack of a better word, of wells? There is, in other words, Ian, if, you know, there's the well policy, but then there's the workaround that we've been doing or acknowledging it. Could that be part of our, um, curtailment program? Would it be easier to put language like that in our curtailment program versus our land development code? Because I, I like the land development code to be a little more, you, you know, because if it'd be a temporary thing and our curtailment program is in theory temporary. So I'm just trying to figure out, and maybe I didn't ask your question, Greg, so.
I, I think, oh, yeah.
Just to, from the planning department, the, the, um, it's a, is a very small slice of this. And the slice is if there's going to be a partition, that's where the new property is created. We're not talking about properties that are, everybody has water now. I mean, the, the water, as I understand it, is everywhere in town. Unless you divide your property, you want to put a new piece of property in, now you need a, now you need a hookup. And that's where the rubber meets the road with the planning commission. I just want to say that. This is a very specific, so whether you're gonna deal with the whole, you know, grandfathering and all that is another issue.
Right. I understand.
So we are, the planning commission is, is in favor of the SDC charges on new, new properties.
So that would solve your portion of the puzzle?
It would.
Okay.
It would, that's a very limited piece.
Yes, please do, Crystal.
I, I wasn't sure I heard right, but if you were talking about changing the code just for a short time, was that what I was hearing?
You mean what John Huddle just said?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I, I don't want to bring up something that you don't need to hear, but I mean, I'm always concerned when I hear changing the code because changing the code becomes a real big deal. because changing the code becomes a real big deal. Uh, it's expensive and it doesn't happen. And things that are intended to be changed in, not just here, but I mean, all over. They don't happen, especially in small cities where there's not money and there's not staff. So I wouldn't want to put something that was meant to be temporary in the code. I think it should be in a resolution or a, a policy or something.
Well, I think, you know, the thing is that this proposed thing that you did, that you and Gary and, I mean, I think there's wisdom in this because it is in the water curtailment policy. It's very clear that it's about, it's during the time of water curtailment. It's very specific, like when somebody comes in, the building staff is gonna accept, you know, this, this method for providing potable water. And to me, the thing, you know, it has very specific in there about how the water has to be metered, that there has to be, you know, make sure that there's no, is there the thing about making sure there's no backwash? Oh, yes, backflow prevention, you know, all that stuff is in here. To me, all of this is like, makes total sense. And to me, it seems like the only thing that is maybe a disagreement is this thing about the well may be used for a period of not more than twenty-four months. So to me, from based on what I've heard, I think everybody be, would be in agreement with the other provisions of this, like unanimous agreement, I would think. Does that make sense? Of the, of this
The SDC fees would fix the planning portion of it, which is huge. Correct?
I, I don't know about, I, that's what Greg has said.
And I believe Crystal agreed with that. That would fix the plat problem because you couldn't, you couldn't partition a piece of property without it. So it would fix it, in my opinion, but.
Well, I don't understand the fee part versus just making the note on the plat. Can one of you guys explain that?
Well, there are two issues. The, the, the commission, which is citizens, who want the SDC to be paid.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, unfair is fair.
So to me, it seems like the number two part of this, which is that, that the well can be used for a period of not more than twenty-four months following the repealment of the curtailment party, part, policy, at which time development must be connected to the city and all fees relevant at that time. That's the one that we have the little rub about. And so that is the one where we either have to come up with and say, do we want no time limit? We just, do we want to have it when the property sells? Do we want a longer time period or do we want, um, the fees paid? When do we want the fees paid? So.
When the property sells seems the fairest to me, but it just, it just seems like we're not giving them a double whammy, but that's like, again, like I stated earlier, that's the way I think. You know, like a double charge, but if the folks know going in and they accept that, then that's something they accept, I guess. So you can look at it either way.
But it couldn't just be sale. It, it would have to be change of use too. Like if you went from, oh, I got this well for my rental house, which turns into a transient type thing or a much bigger type of thing, that's when you would want people to
That could be, that could be written into the code too, I guess.
Ownership or use.
Yeah, just the little words.
Ownership or, or conditional use change?
Yeah, because that's the thing. It would be the conditional use change that would
I'm getting way out of my realm with planning.
Okay. Does anybody, so it sounds like there is consensus, there is not, even though I think it's a good idea, it sounds like there is not consensus on having a time uh, in which people have to come back on. Is that true? Is anybody agree with me?
That they should make, pay the SDC fee when they get their building permit.
Okay.
And they just get hooked up whenever their curtailment's over.
Okay.
And
We'd be bringing
So how do other people?
This way, I don't know if we'll be able to come back, if we have the capacity to come back in twenty-four months and, you know, then they just don't do it. How are we gonna make sure they do it?
Right. Okay. So Gary thinks the SDC fee should be paid at the outset, Tim?
I mentioned that earlier, but it could be, like John said, it could be a down payment or something if we're gonna do, I don't
There could be payments.
That's, yeah. See, see, you're, you're, you're not opposed to payments.
No.
See, I wouldn't be opposed to payments either. You know, whatever would lessen the
What do you think, Perry?
Um, if I, go ahead, Perry. Sorry. Well, I was just gonna say, Pat and I were having a sidebar. Again, we're in a workshop. Is, and it seemed like we're getting to the point of making decisions or reaching conclusions. And we were getting a little nervous because we're in a workshop and, but at the same time, so, so what it would take then would be at a council meeting and not go into this depth, but basically just come to the council meeting and say, you know, I move, we have a, uh, we direct staff to do a, a, a well thing with these options and then bring it back for a decision or something like that.
Yeah, no, and I guess I was just trying to find the consensus points so that we could direct you to, uh, to do something. And so I feel like we've got
Time out though, because that's the rub right there. I think we can direct him to do something, but
Okay.
I make the agenda. So if someone was to come to me with an adjusted resolution or something before the next meeting, then I could be like, oh, okay, then we'll put this in the packet and go. I just, we have to be careful about
Got it.
Yeah.
Maybe not doing a consensus or directing staff right now.
Got it. Okay.
That doesn't mean that you can't like come back to me with something that we can carry, carry the ball forward.
Excellent.
Can we, can we not? Is there, does it make sense to not do workshops anymore, but make them always special sessions? So that the possibility of making a decision is always
I don't think that's how government should work unless we have the packet a, a week ahead of time and the public has the chance to look at it for a week. Like that, we can't do that clockwork quick government. Like we're here to, as elected officials, we need to give people time to, to, to weigh in on our decisions or do their public comment. And I mean, yeah, technically we could, but that would be my concern is, is giving people the opportunity.
And we have a lot of people in the audience tonight and they may want to actually weigh in on this, on this discussion at the next council meeting or if this comes up and bring their views um, to bear too. But I feel like this has been a really, thank you, Pat, for educating me about a workshop. This is actually one of, you know, we haven't had that many workshops as this council. We've talked about the need to have them to maybe, you know, have pressure off other meetings. I feel like it's been a really good conversation. I really appreciate everybody sharing their thoughts and I feel like we we got, shared a lot of information and we've got somewhere and I will follow your advice and maybe follow up with John on how we move forward with the proposal.
I think this has been a great workshop and again, it's to save, this is to save time in the council meeting.
Yeah.
So I think it's fulfilled that purpose for a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So you shouldn't be deterred at all, like
Yeah.
Like what you wanted to achieve and carrying it forward, like it's, you're, you're there, I think. Or like, come to me with like, you get a consensus vote and it'd be fast.
Without a lot
Yes, right, great. And, well, I think this is a good model because I think there are a lot of topics that would be good for us to have this kind of conversation and that's, uh, appreciate everybody you know, coming today and talking about it. And I feel like we've almost been good on time.
Keys to workshops is starting with a, like, oh, we should talk about this resolution or a document that we're workshopping. Like even if it's not even close to what we want, at least we're starting. So thank you, Gary and Anne, and thank you for this because it's priceless for workshops.
And, um, you all, I saw on the agenda, it said other, what was it, Joseph? Other items from the city administrator or something? I have, and Joseph, if you could come and put this to the email and pull up that website, are we ready?
Yes, I think we are and just thank you all and thank you, Crystal, for coming.
Good job, Anne. Good job, Crystal and Greg. Yeah.
Everybody good? On the workshop topic?
Yeah.
Perry, you said what you wanted to say, right? Because we interrupted you. No, you didn't. No, Perry, stop. Everybody timeout. Perry didn't get a chance to say what she wanted today.
Quite all right. I was just gonna
No, you were so nice and you raised your hand and then, then you got double interrupted. So, please.
No, I just, I liked the twenty-four month idea because I, I think that we, there is a way to follow up. So I don't think, just toss that out.
Okay, I'm very glad to hear that. Because I agree with that one too. So
It's easy to make it red ink versus strike it.
And that's the key too, is, yeah, will this, it'll come to us kind of with lined out items and stuff. It'd be a lot easier.
The touchy part on that is as far as public works to do those twelve services, if they had to do it within twelve months, like that's a tall order when you have all of the stuff going on. Because it can be a, easily a one day job to put those services in. So it would almost be, you know, upon twenty-four months after availability by the city type of thing.
Well, that's what it is, I think. It is twenty-four hour, twenty-four months after availability by the city.
I mean, yeah, but availability as far as we will let you pay for services and sign up versus the functional, our public works can get to it.
Got it.
Like that twenty-four
Yeah.
Months might crunch them a little bit.
Right. Because they're always out. Hands on the dikes.
They only got so many fingers, too.
Okay, John.
So good. I just had two things very briefly. I did receive feedback from, uh, the state, uh, water master about the Garrison Lake issue that we talked about last time on the permits. And it looks like they were, um, for salinity and lake levels and whatnot. Uh, were why we were, and it did, the, so we requested the right and the idea to perfect your right, you have to make improvements. This is back in the nineties and the improvements were a series. It was several, a handful of, um, dikes and weers to regulate levels of the lake and the salinity. But it was also, uh, for the idea, it said, it said it was to allow us more water rights on, you know, on the lake. And so that was a part that I didn't understand from the previous research, at least that's how I read it. Uh, more water usage from the lake, but, um, I'm just wondering, does that change anyone's mind about trying to go forward with that project?
So is that, you're saying that we would lose the o, option of using it for water if we let this go?
I, I think so, but at the same time, technically we've, we've, they've told us that our permit has expired and been canceled and we can appeal that, but if, even if we win, then we do have to make all the improvements and that's
I've read the whole thing. I don't think it, I don't think it changes it because here's the deal. We have our water right on the lake. It, the idea, as I read it, John, was that it was going to be a series of like sills, basically like beaver dams that were going to be like architectural dams built up through the wetland. And when I talked to ODFW, they said part of the reason it didn't work is because there weren't, they hadn't figured out fish passage and they hadn't. So I think like we'd have to, we'd have to apply for eight hundred doc bucks to, for each, to have it be revisited. We'd have to have a plan to do this giant waterworks and then we'd actually have to have funding to implement it.
And again, a lot of it is possible that the improvements made to the outfall has kind of made this obsolete a little bit.
I hate how my brain works because you were talking about a group of people that got this together and then I, and then you say, oh, it's for the availability of more water rights and we all assume for the city, but what if it's more water rights so you can drill wells around the lake?
I see what you're saying. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I could, here's what I can do. I can email each of you individually, the report I received and you can mull it over. Because I still believe that we have time, like I, we have that one last meeting in October before the, uh, deadline, I'm pretty sure. So, wait, let's see, June?
Is it October twenty-sixth?
No, maybe it was. Anyway, I'll, I'll email you the information. You can let me know. So I did want to show you this. So I was contacted by, if you could look at the screen up there. I was contacted by a company. It's in the very bottom right-hand corner and it's uh, receive text message notifications. It's called, this company's called Text My Gov. And this is a city called Island City, Oregon, established nineteen oh four. They're about the same size as us. And they use this service. They're a customer of Text My Gov. And what Text My Gov, and so Text My Gov has a link. This is their homepage. Text My Gov has a link right on there. And the idea, I, the, the idea is that you would, um, receive text messages directly from these people. So you could report issues, you could connect. So it's basically allowing people to use their phone and the text function on the phone to communicate with us. And I believe it would allow us to push out messages to people, but people would have to sign up for this feature. So you know, agenda, contacts, bill pays, events, water, uh, report a problem, streetlights.
Not to interrupt, but the four of us has been through this, right?
Very good. This, this very, thank you so much. Thank you.
And I, that's why I was interrupting. I mean, I don't know if you're familiar, but, but about a year and a half ago, we, we thoroughly went, at the end of the day.
I am done. I am done. Good.
We just decided we didn't have the money to do that.
Very good.
You know what we could consider like an on-call phone though?
Anyway.
John is
Meeting is definitely over now, isn't it?
I'm not asking for a consensus at all.
It's the same company, by the way.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's right. It's like, oh, that
I was not aware of that and I thought I'd bring it to you as a very easy
You're doing your job.
Good.
You know, John, there was an idea that came up with that website that people could sign up for notifications from our website. So I don't know if that's still in progress or Joseph, do you know? We can. We haven't done it yet, right? But So that's something that's already in progress.
Right.
So anyway, cool. Do I get to do this on your head? No.
Oh.
Give it right back.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay, I'm done. Yes.
Meeting adjourned what time?
Perry.
Go ahead, Perry, yeah.
Um, so I'm reminding you that we want to schedule a meeting for the end-to-end problem.
Yes. We, uh, I talked to Perry today and they want to talk about moving the location.
Of moving the location prior to the next meeting, um, to get this moving.
So do we have, uh, do we do another workshop or actually an actual special meeting for this? Oh, right, yeah.
No, we'd have to do a special meeting in two weeks. And that's the key. I'm not, wasn't trying to say we can't do special meetings. We just have to give a good, solid time and, and advertise.
Maybe that's the way to do them though, maybe. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, no, and it does keep you out of a lot of trouble as long as we can keep the, the timeline right.
Yeah, and we just need to realize too, just because we set a special session to do that, there's no guarantee we're gonna come to consensus and
Just we can.
So we don't want, we don't want end-to-end to, you know, have false
Think we're gonna get it done. Yeah.
You guys have a question for Crystal while she's here. Crystal, what we're talking about is a group who's considering leasing city property for the purpose of allowing people to sleep, you know? And so I'm wondering, my question was, is that gonna be any kind of a planning issue, zoning? Have you seen other cities who've done this and they've had to jump through some food for thought? That's it. I'm not gonna ask for an answer. I just
I can, uh, ask the lister.
Good. Thank you.
Awesome.
So
Do we know the location?
October fifth?
Yes, it's the, the, isn't it sixteenth, is that where?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Tishna.
Eighteenth and Tishna.
It's by, it's behind auto care, like that, that right away.
Okay.
Is that D?
No. It's, uh, Tishna. Goes behind ads and
I know where it's, oh.
So it's behind the garage?
No, I'm just saying Tishna goes behind ads.
Behind car care. Back behind old car care.
It's not by that.
Car care?
No, it's a street, not a right of way.
No, towards, uh, right, yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, Greg. Greg. Greg.
They need an address. So if that's a right of way, it's an address.
I'm just saying.
It's, it's
I'm just saying, you know, for their
Yep, I know.
That's it.
Well, they'll have to answer that one.
Okay, Roger.
Needs to be addressed.
All right.
Okay. So wait, so we're gonna, does that mean, should we schedule the meeting?
That on the head. That does go on the head.
Should we, should we schedule that meeting before we adjourn? Is that gonna be October fifth?
I can't do that.
Thursday? When do, do you want to do it?
Wait, if Perry can't do it, that's a, that's
Right.
It's a parks, isn't it?
Okay. On, on the Monday?
One is, are you guys Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Tuesdays, can't be a Tuesday.
Wednesday?
Oh, yeah. Let's do it to where it lines up Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah. No, that'll crush Joseph, you know.
No, I meant for me.
Oh, you, yeah, all of us. It'll crush all of us.
So the
I had workshop posted there for a second.
Or the Monday, the ninth, that's a, that's a, that's Columbus.
I tell you what, I will, I will do some kind of a survey
Okay.
Uh, view all to see what, what date works. So we don't have to be in here anymore.
Okay, so it's okay to adjourn?
What time?
Linda, can you move over? Oh. This meeting adjourns at seven oh one P.